Good morning, good afternoon or good evening to everyone joining us today for the first town hall of the month. Hope everyone is well and certainly healthy. Um, as per usual, before we kick things off, quick reminder that our town halls are recorded and made available for playback. Um, even via our you hospitable YouTube channel. So even for example, if you missed January twenty sixth town hall. I believe it's the audio file is available on Clubhouse, but also on our YouTube page. So you can go back and listen to all the rich, rich exchange that we had two weeks ago concerning payment processing. Um, as per usual, questions joining on the stage for the Q and A portion of the session. Please remember to raise your hand. Special mention to also remember to mute yourself when you're on stage and not speaking. Um, but of course, if you'd rather keep a low profile, contribute, um, animo, uh, anima, uh. That got the better of me. Any must leave, no problem. Submit your questions via slido.com hashtag hospitable. I'll be monitoring the platform there. Once again, in regard to the Q and A session, those of you who joined the last town hall in January, two weeks ago. You recall that we've tweaked the format little in order for those discussions, these discussions that we have at the town hall to be as productive as possible. So rather than us just answering a bunch of varied questions, we want to give each session more of a structure or a theme. So for this week, we'll be recapping some of the learnings regarding payment processing and swiftly moving on to hear from you. About direct booking, what are some of the challenges, what would you would love to see from us, et cetera? We'll be asking you questions and hope to get your insights on how to better the current offering. So. Please come with your insights. We'll be waiting to uh hear from you. Pierre, I think I pass back to you to keep this off.
Yes, thank you very much for this fantastic intro Angela. Uh, so again, we are gonna have something around payment processing, but this time it's. Uh, we want to kind of discuss a few more ideas that we feel were validated already from, from the audience. And kind of probably two things a little bit. Um, for me, so my side, so I'm, I'm starting with some company updates. And actually yesterday evening, and I know there are a few investors of hospitable in the room. So yes, I'm gonna talk about investments again. But I should probably one of the best and most pleasurable uh email of all, of all time that I ever, ever got to send, which was an email to all investors. That's something that. I'm sending on a monthly basis um for, for people that have executed their, their investments. And yeah, so we knew and we announced already on the previous panel that the month of uh January went absolutely amazing for us and we get the final number. Uh, a monthly recurring revenue has been growing nine point seventy six percent. This is not even something that we ex- were expecting. So it's fantastic. And it puts us really on track for a growth target. Uh, for the year twenty twenty two. Um, and all of that is basically a great combination of booking activity occurring with our host. Uh, and slight change with our own pricing uh that, um, that basically simplifies simply the way we, we're processing those. Um, the other part is really something that I want to highlight, but Matthew, we go, we go back to it a little bit. Um, because something related with customers and his own success for his own team, uh, already with sales. Uh, but January, it's, it's January, so it's still suspected, you know, in our books to be a ready to be quiet month. Uh, for customer acquisition, it was, it has been the top month ever in history by quarter margin. So we have added last month three hundred and fifty clients, uh, which actually puts us on track to actually double the size. Of our, of our customers uh for the year twenty twenty two. Uh, we have announced five thousand customers at the end of December, if I'm correct. And we're basically on track now to reach ten thousand customers and by the, actually a bit more than ten thousand customers. Uh, for December twenty twenty two, so growing one hundred and five percent. What's really stellar and amazing. Is the fact that not only we have increased the trials very significantly, and I think the success of that is tied to, uh, to a bit of our marketing. But also our conversion rates uh for connected accounts has been particularly increasing uh from fourteen ninety fifty seven percent. All of that is great and fine. But who exactly is going to be supporting those customers? Uh, last week, we, last time, sorry, we were introducing you to Shifa, which you've been joining our support team. Uh, last, so two weeks ago, and is actually now actively replying to, to you. I've invited Ray, uh, who is joining a customer support team. It would be great if Ray near could join us. Reina, Oli, Smarason. Hello, how are you doing, Reina? You know, this is why. Yes, we can hear you really.
Yeah, I'm doing good. Uh, thanks for having me.
Where are you based?
So I'm, uh, I'm from Iceland, but I'm based in Barcelona, Spain.
So you're Iceland. So what is your fantastic name? I'm sorry, you, or the way you're saying it, I'm, I'm sorry, I make, it's not about me. I'm not making fun. It's just absolutely beautiful when you say it. Your full name.
Yeah, so where I'm from, we roll the R's. So it's Reynir Ole Smorason.
Which is fantastic, because now you end up in Spain where they also roll the R's. So that it's, yeah. But it's beautiful. So uh absolutely amazing to hear that. Um, what are you gonna, what is gonna be your job at hospitable?
So I'm in customer support, customer support advocate.
Customer support advocate.
Yes.
And.
No problems, any problems.
Solving any problems. Have you been solving any problems recently from customers?
Uh, I've done four tickets so far, but I'm still fresh in the training.
Four tickets, four tickets today?
No, in two days. Yeah, I'm, I'm still heavily supervised though.
Heavily supervised. Uh, and I'm sorry, what was the last question that was somewhere in the books? That I cannot find anymore.
What is your impression so far?
Wait, what's your impression so far of, of?
Yeah, so far, absolutely fantastic. Loving it. Just a great company, uh, culture and atmosphere and great people to work with and, uh. Yeah, feel, feel really welcome and really loving it and just can't wait to, to get really stuck into work, you know. When, when, when training is over, getting into solving some problems and helping people out.
There's gonna be plenty of opportunity for you unless, you know, Yakub is doing his job right. That's the wrong way to intro Yakub. Yakub, we've been, thank you very much, Ray. Yakub will be talking about you a lot in past panels. Uh, where, where are you based?
Hi, everyone. I'm from Prague, Czechia.
Prague in Czech Republic. Is that Czech Republic or Czechia? I, they, they is that the, the old way and the new way of saying things? Is that official?
Uh, it is official. So actually twenty thirties ago, it was a Czechoslovakia Republic. Now it's still only. And still some, some, uh, my friends from US call, call us that way. Uh, but it was Czech Republic or Czechia. I think just they wanted to make it simpler.
Yeah, wanted to make it simpler by Czechia. So from Prague, Czechia. And yeah, what is your day, what is your job at hospitable?
Uh, so my role is VP of Engineering.
So what does that mean? What are you gonna do?
Uh, as you said, a lot of, a lot of stuff, and hopefully, yeah, we'll make race life easier. So it's, uh, leading a team through management leadership. Uh, recruiting, scaling, technical guidance, uh, and making sure our team develops quality and products.
So that's, that's absolutely amazing. And what's your impression so far?
Impression great, uh, great so far. I can just echo what Ray said a minute ago. Um, and at the top of that, I especially like overarching focus on customers, business and product is coming from all sides, from all teams. Everyone is working towards uh grading the best product experience, which is uh great to see, a great to be a part of.
Yeah, you, 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 so you started sending your first ticket to a, to a customer. Not yet. You're waiting for a little bit of feedback. I can feel, I can see. Uh, from, from the support team. So thank you very much for that. Obviously, you, uh, Yakub, you're gonna be on the stage on, on, on next town halls. Uh, after your onboarding is kind of going the way, so that basically you would be in charge of communicating that and hearing first of all from customers. And, uh, and obviously kind of discussing roadmaps and any kind of product updates and engineering updates, which obviously our customers are particularly fond of.
Great, looking forward.
Good luck on your onboarding and keep to continue pushing that direction. Um, so yeah, I, I basically started probably in the wrong way. And thank you very much, Ray and Yakub for being on stage. Um, next, I'm actually gonna be very happy to delegate the work to, to Matthew, but basically it's customer satisfaction and growth and recruiting, actually.
Yeah, sure. We'll throw, we'll throw all that in under my plate. Hey, y'all. Hope everybody's doing well on this lovely Wednesday. Uh, and just a note for you, so you have an idea of how we do things here. Yakub, who we brought on as our VP. Everybody starts off regardless of what their role is here at Hospitable, we put them all in customer support. So your first couple of weeks, you're learning the product and you're responding, interacting with our customers just to have a better sense of, of what goes on. You know, especially for those folks who aren't in the industry or, you know, who are coming from different roles. Speak to that individual host, right? Speak to that property manager, hear their pain points, hear the problems we're trying to solve, so that we can make sure that you're. You're delivering a ton of value in your role as you, you move on from that initial onboarding. So something I think that's, that's pretty cool uh that we do here and we could definitely see, you know, the proof is in the pudding there with the team that we've brought on. Alright, so customer updates. We're gonna start off again with our NPS since the last time we met, right? We are currently carrying a NPS score of the last two weeks of a fifty five. Um, our hosts are giving us a product average of about eight point six out of ten. Above fifty, considered excellent, but our goal is to consistently hit over seventy, which is considered world class. Um, so definitely a, a, a few points to gain there. Our all-time score overall is a sixty-three, in case you were curious. Uh, revenue growth, you know, Pierre kind of touched on this somewhat. Um, so one thing that hosts absolutely love about our software is that. They can expect to pay less during their slower seasons, their slower periods, which does have an effect on our revenue. So at this month, you know, uh. For the first few weeks, we've seen a slight dip in our revenue thus far, but that's entirely due to the seasonality in our pricing structure. You know, most of our hosts are over there in North America and the past thirty days, which is after New Year's, as you're all probably feeling. You know, it's a bit of a slow down period. Um, but with that said, our customer growth hasn't stopped, as Pierre alluded to. Um, you know, we're regularly posting all-time highs and new trials, conversion to paid rate, subscription activations. And our churn is staying pretty steadily. Um, it seems that we're finding a lot more customers who are more of that right fit. Or actually they're finding us. Um, so that's why we're seeing a lot of those conversion rates go up. And I think that also has to do with some of the product offerings. You know, we're starting to offer more products that, that you hosts are all looking for, you know, today. Um, recruiting updates, just had a great interview. We still technically have that sales rep position open for the Americas. There's even a chance that we add somebody else to the team and, and maybe hire two. I know Vera may be happy to hear that. Um, she could use a bit of a break with all that inbound that's coming through right now. And then aside from that, uh, still on the hunt for that CS engineer. You know, someone who's interacting with those customers has a technical capability as well. So that customer support engineer specifically. Um, ideally within those European time zones. And I think we're also on the hunt for a few product engineers. And yeah, we got a, we got a really, really attractive hiring plan, as I'll, I'll, I'll put it that way, over the next few months. So definitely, you know, pay attention, angel.co, uh, that's on Angel List is where we throw all of our jobs at the very least. So take a look there if you're interested and see what's going on. Um, what are we hearing from our hosts? So, you know, I'll, I'll again give another shout out to, to Vera. Thanks for sharing this with us. You know, we're seeing larger property managers start to come through our doors than we had, you know, over the last quarter or so. Some of their requests include, you know, the parent-child listing management. And that's something not a lot of people have good solutions for, but you know, what we're talking about specifically, hey, I have a whole house, but it's four bedrooms. I wanna be able to rent out the whole house, or I wanna be able to rent out those individual bedrooms. When I do rent out a bedroom or two, we need to make sure that whole house is blocked. I'm sure some of you have a similar situation there. Uh, but we were talking about that yesterday in one of our meetings and Pierre got excited about it, so I'm gonna get excited about it. Um, that's, we're just gonna leave it at that, but, but that's definitely something that we've seen an uptick in. It's usually something that ebbs and flows, where, you know, we hear it for a while and then it kinda isn't something that they're knocking on our doors asking. It was interesting, a few months back, I even had somebody who was like a parent child for houses that were next to each other. Hey, you could rent out both houses. And have one massive, you know, stay with us, or you could rent out the individual homes, which was a, a pretty clever way to use that parent child. I'm not sure if we're violating anything there on Airbnb's terms and conditions, but we'll just leave it at that. Um, the last thing we'll talk about is the GoFundMe still active, you know, for our, our teammates down in the Philippines. Uh, we are gonna be wrapping that up soon, so please go ahead, consider donating, consider sharing that with your networks. I'll post that link here shortly. And it is available to us in our social channels. Um, yeah, and you know, with that said, super excited to work with, thanks Angela, I appreciate you posting that. Super excited to be working with Yakub, really excited to what he brings to the table and, and Ray. You know, Ray, Ray's gift game's on point, so, so I've been having a few laughs with, with some of the messages he's posted our way, so definitely, uh, definitely a fantastic addition to lighten things up. Um, and that's all for me. So I, I thank you all so much for, for listening.
Oh, okay. And I'm temporarily still giving the product updates until Yakub in, in the better position to be able to, to do so. So this week, or the past two weeks, nothing, nothing new has been released in beta. What's been happening is basically our team is working de facto on consolidation items, which means fixing bugs and fixing issues. That are escalated by our customers. And we've always found that working on those kind of consolidation and, and bug issues always delivering great benefits. To our customers, because fundamentally, you want to have a product that works as expected. And ironing out the details actually makes a difference in how you are basically perceiving the value that we're delivering on, on a day-to-day basis for you. Uh, what is the team working on? We are preparing and mapping out all the requirements for direct after hearing all the feedback. That you, uh, that you have sent away in the previous tunnel in particular. The first phase is called the price. Uh, and it's actually pretty, pretty much an important part of it. So the first thing is gonna be delivered, is expected to be delivered this Friday. Uh, I've checked that really with the engineering team, so especially Ben and Sam that are, that are working on this behind the scenes and I believe casting too. Um, the idea is that we are gonna be able to open a new page about the list of fees that we'll be supporting. Uh, on the property details. So that will allow you to kind of set up the fees and discounts that are based on your Airbnb data. We have a very comprehensive list of basically everything that we cover and some things that we will not uh cover yet. Um, so that's for example, we'll support uh weekly discounts and a monthly discount rules that you are, that can be imported from your Airbnb listings. But we will not be supporting more, uh, more sophisticated custom, uh, custom discount rules. So for example, if you have, uh, someone that's staying for eight weeks, offering them an extra, an extra discounts compared to a, to a monthly. We will be basically, we are looking to hear from the feedback, uh, for, for implementing that at a later pace. Does saying no now doesn't mean saying no forever. Uh, we are building a product and we basically know that this is on the five-year horizon anyway. And the second phase will, I think we are gonna accept, expect to ship that by February twenty second. Uh, so that is in ten days from now, and that's gonna be after giving ample time to our users to set up those fees. We're gonna make those fees visible on the direct booking website. That would include your direct, um, your direct, with, with the website, but also naturally the widgets. And the idea is basically you enter the dates, you have the base price, you have the extra guests, you, um, you have basically all those kind of discounts and fees that are added to it. And we basically would simply be able to adjust that, that discounts. They, we expect basically that there will be some kind of, some feedback around it and. We need to have probably a better understanding on how to do that. So for example, it's particularly risky for, for us. I think we see that item as particularly risky, uh, because for example, you know, we, uh, there are rules about what type of fees. Uh, so first of all, that calculated, but that part is relatively okay actually, uh, but actually what they are calculated against. So you're gonna add a management fee after adding the extra guest fees, uh, so to formulate like the subtotal and et cetera. Uh, so there is a bit of complexity that goes into ironing out the details and ensuring that the price that obviously is communicated to your guest is gonna be of relevance. One part will be carved out for now, and that's obviously a very significant part. And we are gonna be working on basically mapping that out for later points. And that's gonna be everything related with taxes. So we will not anticipate the taxes for that first early release of February twenty second. So we, if we are adjusting the rates, if we are proposing the rates on the direct booking website, we'll make it clear that it's outside of, um, of taxes. Uh, and we'll be working basically with partners and basically definitely on product ourselves. Uh, if you are not based in the US, to set, to set your taxes up, uh, you or yourself on that part. There is, it's a bit of a complicated release, because obviously we want to ensure that for most of our customers, it would actually never have to set up the taxes. Uh, because all of that will be through integrations alone. So that's something that I'm very happy to discuss later, like what type of fees you want to do. I'm happy to provide more details on the Q and A section. The second part, after the price, it's the money. And actually more like getting paid. Uh, more, that is really the, the key driver, uh, because we, the payment by credit card, for example, they're always gonna be. Uh, around, uh, they're always gonna be working whatever provider, provider process are we using. So we talked last week a lot about Stripe. And what has been the experience of working with Stripe, uh, for, for, for a lot of you, of, of different levels. I believe that most of the customers basically want to have a Stripe integration, because that's kind of seen as a default for payment processing and for. Uh, for integration of that same sort. But there is no consideration basically of, you know, the entire world that's happening out there and for faster options. Stripe is amazing for startups, for businesses that are getting started. Because when you think about it, it's really the only service provider that allows you to create your own account on the fully self-service fashion. With all the, all the auto, all the automated automation for the verification and all. And obviously, for a software provider like us, it's very convenient. If you're working with other, uh, other providers like Braintree, like Adrian, uh, or others. You need to have a lot of backend for, for them to basically comply with the rules. What also has been transparent from, communicated from customers is really about the fact that Stripe is a fantastic fit. For actually companies like ours, like SaaS startup, uh, with a very low risk, uh, from transaction or chargebacks in, in particular. And that's not the case for, uh, for travel and hospitality. Uh, they are gonna be charged back, they are gonna be refund rates. And that's typically the type of customer that Stripe doesn't particularly provide a good experience for. Um, so we, we have identified basically other alternatives to Stripe for basically what we call our premium offering. So during the premium offering, we don't want you to create a Stripe account. We don't want you to interact with payment service providers. We don't want you to have exposure with chargebacks. This is like, we go all the way from the guest and the pay, and the payout and the product that we're really servicing for you is money. We are giving you the money from that was shot by the guest, and we ensure a bunch of other services, like guest rating, guest verification, uh, like insurance. And, and, um, sorry, and tax, and tax and compliance in, in particular. So really streamlining, uh, that, that experience. So we, we are gonna be exploring other providers for you. If you are, for example, a property manager, you already have a Stripe account. You will naturally be connecting Stripe account. We will allow the connection with Stripe accounts. But that will be under a specific operating, offering for customers that are ready to take more ownership and more responsibility. When dealing with, uh, with money flows in particular. Um, something that really was a key highlight and that really has been circulated multiple times, uh, during the last annual was really about. Matching payout methods, uh, for different properties. And I think something that's gonna be very important to, for us. Is that if you're using, if you're connecting Stripe accounts, you'll be able to match your Stripe account on multiple properties. So one, all, or select, or select list of properties. So that you can, the, you, for example, if you're a property management company and you set up a Stripe account for an individual client. You can actually have all their properties under the same Stripe account, uh, which I think is something of relevance. Uh, for people that have to manage trust accounting in particular. Uh, that's gonna be the same as well for, uh, for a premium offering, where the only thing that you'll be needing to provide us. Are really gonna be a bank account or maybe even, um, another alternative payout method. Uh, in that case, you will also be able to match, uh, a, a bank account to receive payouts. For individual, uh, for, for one property, all properties, or a select number of properties across the properties that are connected to your hospitable account. Um, one thing that was very important to us, uh, in relation with the money, uh, is fast payout. Uh, so that's something that actually will be able to offer, and I think we identified a great partner for that. Uh, to be able to offer you same-day payouts for, uh, customers that are in the United States while still being, we, it's ACH. And for customers that are in the European Union, that will also include separate transfers that are instant. And what is very interesting for me and is going to investigate is instant card payouts. So that means every day of the week, including on weekends, getting paid directly on a cow that is gonna be receiving all the, all the payments. I think there, there's something that we need to explore a bit, a bit more, because there are, we expect the amounts to be quite significant. Um, and it's not something that basically we need to find a solution, we see that skills greatly for that. At this point in time, you would only be able to match a payout method with one property. That means you cannot have payout rules. Uh, like Airbnb used to have, or maybe you are, they do still have, um, about the, so paying twenty percent for one account and eighty percent to another. And that's something that we want to contemplate, but that's gonna be for us for later. Same as well for later, that's gonna be all the installment for guests. I know that's something that was circulated. Uh, but for us, I think we're gonna optimize first for the short-term rentals, uh, stays that really are taking less than thirty days. And we know obviously for a business that there's a great opportunity for longer than thirty-day stays, but there are also more legal implications. In, involved with that. Uh, we talked also a little bit about the cancellation policies for direct bookings. And I think for us, that's gonna be, we're gonna be looking into that a bit later. So, because I think that requires a lot more, a lot more thinking. I don't want that to be a broker. For shipping payment processing for most of the usage scenario. And so, um, we will basically start with a non-refundable policy. Um, that basically I believe is what is the default expected from, uh, from a lot of our customers. And then later implement more varied cancellation policies that could be deployed out there. So those are just a few ideas. Uh, I hope you follow through for all the different kind of components. So if K I likes to kind of summarize, this Friday, you can expect to have a page on your property details that we recap on, you know, fees and discounts. Uh, on February twenty second or by February twenty second, we hope to be, we will be able to show those rates. To, uh, guests that are visiting your direct booking website or on your booking direct widgets. And we're still basically mapping out and, uh, and finding a solution for the money. And basically processing actually the payments and getting you paid. Uh, the idea obviously for us is to optimize for velocity. Which means getting something out of the door, even though that's not gonna be a runout, so there will be issues. But we will not want those issues, obviously, to be about the money that we are charging the guest. That's why we want to validate that early. And we don't want that to be too much affecting on, uh, in particular, how much money you're getting paid. Um, in, in particular, because we appreciate that this is extremely important. And we want to give ourselves a little bit of time to make sure that we are going in the right, with the right approach for direct payments. So that basically what the latest is on the, on the payouts, on the payment processing and the whole part of, of direct. And what the team has been, has been working on. Hi.
Are you out of breath?
Yeah, yeah, I need to.
So should we head into the Q and A portion of the session? Pierre, Matthew.
I think we can, yes, absolutely. It was pleasure. Um.
Should we open the stage? So if anyone has any, you know, insights, comments, questions, follow-ups on what Pierre shared or Matthew may have shared. And you'd like to, you know, take the stage, please send a request and I will invite you on the stage. Oh, hello Sean.
Yeah, I think we can, we can start maybe with some questions that were already asked on Slido, so while Sean gets set up. Thank you, Sean, for joining us on stage.
Sure.
So I think there, there was a question actually that was from the last town hall, which actually is now particularly relevant. What fees will be supported? We have a pet-friendly policy, but need to collect pet fees on occasion. And I think that's a fantastic usage scenario. I think for us at this point, it's gonna take a little bit of time to get really, to get pet fees handled and managed. Uh, I know that the engineering team is particularly excited about having paid fees really embedded within the booking flows. And that's something that probably will be in a later release. Uh, but definitely I'm gonna appreciate that it's something particularly important. We want to implement that. Uh, but that's not gonna be part of our first release, uh, because that's just is slightly more complicated. Uh, to handle, uh, for, for a direct booking, uh, booking product. And we had another question, uh, again from the last tunnel. When can we expect prices to be displayed on my websites? Uh, so yeah, the date is Janu-, uh, sorry, January, February twenty second. Um, so yeah, that's the date when we want to run those calculation and display that to your guest. And when you can validate, especially that the price that you see is the price that you expect. Uh, so one step closer to a full release of a direct product. Okay, so those were just a few things that, sorry, that were left on the side.
Yep, absolutely. Sean, can you hear us? Can you join in?
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, thanks for having me up. Great job by the team as always. Um, yeah, really impressed all the improvements so far. Two quick questions. One, you mentioned about the same-day payments on direct booking. Is that gonna be the day someone books a stay or the day like their stay begins? Like, so if they book them two months from now, do you get paid, you know, right now for that booking that happens in two months, or do you have to wait until that booking actually arrives?
Yeah, so that's a very good question. Um, I, I believe there, there, there are legal, there, there are, there are some questions. And every kind of payment service provider has their different answer. But I think we want to offer is that if you are gonna be processing all the payments, you should be in charge of basically. So deciding when you want to get paid, because at the end of the day, you are accepting to take the entire risk. For a premium offering where we are the one being the merchant of record and managing all the payments, I think the order is gonna have to be different. Because we, obviously, we are taking the responses, the responsibility for chargebacks, and we don't want to pay you. And then we basically receive a chargebacks, uh, from, uh, from, from the guest who, you know, for any reasons. So I think we're gonna align, uh, for that, for that premium offering in particular, with paying you at the day after the check-in. Which is basically aligning with the practice of, of most channels for that very reason. So basically, ensuring that we can pay you, you have. So basically ensuring that we can pay you, you have the guests that are checking, the risk of chargebacks all of a sudden gets significantly lower. And we're basically generating obviously all the data behind to defend ourselves in the in the case of a child back man. And you can have the opportunity to defend yourself for your own child back case if you are processing the payments yourself. That that for now is this thinking. What do you think about it, Sean?
I mean, I think that makes sense from like a risk perspective on your end. Because you don't know if someone's going to cancel a $3,000 booking and then you have to chase us down for that $3,000 if you already paid out. But if if you could give the option for people that do want to do it on their own
Yeah.
to get paid upfront and then deal with that hassle later, then I think that would be, you know, a win win for both of, you know, for both parties.
I I think to be clear, since we basically we start with a non-refundable policy as a cancellation policy, the the basic behavior is going to be that for, if you connect your own Stripe account, it's going to be that you receive the money at the moment it was paid. I think later we can look at, you know, different kind of breakdowns. But I think that's kind of the path where we want to go. That's probably not the most guest friendly, and that's why I believe it needs to be adjusted. But it's basically the simplest, like happy path for for engineering and product in particular.
Okay, great. Because yeah, I mean, I think that's one of the big benefits of direct bookings is, you know, you're obviously like getting all these bookings now and you get the money now to do whatever you want with it. Instead of like the Airbnb setup where you get paid after they stay. So you have $50,000 in bookings, but you can't use it until they actually say. All right, one, one other follow up question.
Yes.
So I use webhooks quite a bit. I was wondering if there's any way to customize webhooks where I could select two different things. One, I would love to have the ability to send a push whenever we get a review in with like the star rating and the, you know, whatever the the guest wrote. That way I could just keep my kind of database updated all the time. And then the second thing would be, I know you already pushed, like if someone puts in their email, you push it to MailChamp. Is there any way also to like select the box where I could have that as a webhook to update automatically? Like those two things would just make it swear, you know, my kind of spreadsheet database is like always up to date with all the info relevant to a customer.
Okay, yeah, so those are new features. So that's really to be classified as feature request. For now, we do have webbooks and they are being very actively maintained by our team and webbooks for for reservations. So I think there there is room for plenty of improvements in relation with the way we want to do webbooks. And especially, you know, as we want to work with more integration and more partners to basically interact with the data that is, that is our customers' data hosted on our on our software. We need to, we know, I know very intimately that we need to have more cases for webbooks, whether that's for messages, whether that's for thread updates, you know exactly everything that's happening pre-sale before you, before you have you have been guessed, I think we need to facilitate definitely the experience with webbooks. I, that's the first time I'm hearing something about reviews, but it may make, it may make sense. I think to highlight, obviously, you can have a review data exports, obviously from matrix that you can do once in a while that contain obviously all the data and all the aggregate about it. Is there, do you have a specific usage case for for getting the review in in real time?
Yeah, for sure. Yeah, for me, you know, like I'm going to retarget and market to the people that stay with me that left a five star review. Like, I don't want to message a guest that was unhappy, which could, you know, come back to me in another way. So if I could know that John Smith, who stayed eight days ago, left a five star review, then their little record in my spreadsheet would get updated, their five star guest. And then I would know they're safe to be added to like the market list.
Yeah.
And right, right now I do have to like manually go in, you know, find that person, update it. And, you know, it's just something that I get behind on. And if it could just happen automatically, that's way better for me.
Yeah, okay, I get, I get it. Thank you. Yeah, sorry, Matthew.
Sean, I just a quick question. How are you, how are you updating your spreadsheet with those webhooks? Are you using a tool in between or did you create your own solution?
Yeah, I'm using Zapier to do it.
Okay.
So, yeah, and so I mean, if I could just, if there's any way to like, you know, if you're on your end to receive like, hey, there's a new, you know, new review listed. And then like Zapier could pull that and send it to the sheets or whatever, then yeah, that would be awesome. Just because again, anything that's like manual where I have to go in and check, it just gets on my to do list, which is already really long. And I'll forget and get behind. And if it can happen automatically, then I can have another zap set to message that guest like, thanks for the five star review. We also host these properties or whatever it is. And then just all that stuff happens and, you know, it actually gets done instead of relying on me to remember to do it later.
Absolutely. And are you, so you mentioned Zapier there, are you using Zapier as well to trigger off some automated emails? You're using like an automated marketing tool just to kind of share your knowledge with the other hosts who are in there?
Um, that's definitely the plan. I haven't, like, I've been kind of waiting on the direct booking thing to really get involved with that. But that's definitely my plan is, you know, after guests leave a five star review, they get moved to a certain list. And then they get entered into like some sort of email flow or something like that to where, you know, they stayed with me at one property, it's a little no about other properties. Also, like one of my plans is to let them know that, you know, I I host people, I host all these homes all around. So if you know anyone that needs to, you know, that has a home that needs help, let me know.
So the, so the real solution here is to have hospitable send an email after the fact to any of those guests who have booked a five star stay, sharing your direct booking information. So you don't even need to worry about those sheets updated, et cetera, et cetera.
Um, yeah, that would be good, but I mean, I I do like to have, you know, control over it to where, you know, if I want to make it a text instead of an email or if I want to do, you know, a different way of doing it. Like, I, you know, if I could just have that data that's like five star, they said this about it. And it's all in my, like, you know, Google Sheets or whatever, then I know. Okay, that's a great guess. This is what happened. If they rebook, I can find all their information right away. You know, so like, just having that like ability to, I know people don't want to necessarily, if they use webhooks, have a bunch of zaps trigger anytime something changes if they don't use that. That's all I was saying. If there's like a little box I could click where it's like, send me review info, click, yep, I opt into that. Send me their email address. Yep, I opt into that. And that way, if I want to use those zaps or whatever, I can. But if other people don't, then they're not, you know, paying for stuff they're not using.
Thank you, Sean, for that. Jacob is in the room and so definitely listen that about about webbooks and the the usage, right? And thank you for first getting that. Angela? Okay, you.
Yes, I was about to, either we go to James, who was patiently waiting next, or we take a question from Slido just to go back. Uh, between.
I think we we should go, we can go with with James, who's been waiting quite a bit. Thank you, thank you, Sean, for this question.
Hi, James.
Hello, James.
You're muted.
We had you last time on payment process.
Oh, I'm muted now. Hey, this is my second time on 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 this platform, but I think it's great. And I really appreciate you guys allowing us to have some input on the fantastic job that y'all are doing and really helping us out at on the end results of that. My question is, everything that's got to do with payments also has to do with taxes. And I'm accustomed to VRBO and Airbnb remitting those taxes on their host behalf. So do you guys plan on implement anything of that sort? And does that, is that relatable to what you guys topic is today?
Yes, so that's great points. So thank you, James. I think you're really, so the same as last, last annual, you realize that we are, we have, you are the ideal persona, I think, for direct, for direct booking is really, we want to make your life so much damn easier that really all your objection about direct bookings go to nothing. So the, the way we want to structure our direct booking offering is you will want to give you two options, whether you are basically, I'm sorry to say, you know, you're going to have a basic integration, we're going to provide you more like the website builder, the kind of different integration with other parties. But fundamentally, you are the one taking all the responsibility. And that means taking the responsibility also for setting the taxes. And that may be a good fit if, for example, we don't have a great solution in your area or you are very knowledgeable about how it works. The most users, we believe, will go with a premium offering where the, everything is managed for them. They have the gas vetting included, they have the insurance included to basically ensure that there is the same level of protection, whether you're booking direct or not. Having the same kind of payouts, payments, sorry, the same rates or and fees as you have to experience of working on a, on a, on a, on an OTT, on an Airbnb or the likes. And taxes are definitely a huge part of that because they are the one thing that that can be a huge blocker to get access to information and have something that's going to be current for you. So for a premium offering, if you're based in the United States, we'll be basically getting you started with a partner that's called Avalara. That's actually is the one used by Airbnb and Verbo for their own taxes collection and being able to determine what the rates or what are the fees that they need to collect on your behalf that they would then be be able to file. And and that would basically allow us to always present to your guests with a correct amount for the total amount that's paid. Obviously, that goes with reporting and exports so that you know exactly on much of that is, you know, the net payout, net of any kind of taxes. And then what type of taxes are included and for which jurisdiction, jurisdiction or authority. So I'm glad to hear that basically you already identified that taxes really big problem. And that's why basically we want to be helping. So for all our customers that will be using a premium direct booking where we are taking far more responsibility. And we try to align the experience as much as possible to that of of Airbnb, for example, while still give you more ownership because you're going to own the cancellations, you're going to own the guest waiting, you're going to be able to kind of ensure all the, all the terms that you, that you adhere without having, you know, asking Airbnb to want to throw those terms for themselves. So I think a clear direct line of communication with the, with your guest. But at the same time, making it so damn easy because you won't be able to differentiate in terms of, in terms of user experience or finances, even in that regard. So yes, taxes will be included in premium so that you don't have to set them up yourself.
Okay, that's excellent. I'm for me with Avalara, I've actually used them myself to make sure. So that that is a great choice and somebody to help. I'm sure I'm going to be a premium member rather than anything else because the, the more I can take off my plate, the more I can focus on the the host experience and setting up the property. So I greatly think that that's a great part of what you guys are doing. The only other thing that you did mention in in what you were saying as far as managing through a premium service is the, the, the managing the, the host as far as liabilities, as far as insurance. And I found that with VRBO, you can, you do got an option. You can either ask them to pay the $49 for the insurance or you can charge them a deposit. And I've, my experience has been when the guests pay a deposit that they expecting back, they are more, more manageable guests because they want to make sure that they get their deposit back. And when they pay the $49 insurance, they don't really even consider that of issue for them. And I was wondering, how would you place that so that we could have a little bit of both? Or we're going to have just one or the other, or it's just going to be like Airbnb air cover right now?
That's, that's, that's a very good question, and I think there are really multiple approaches based on that. I, yeah, I mean, I, I think every time we talk about payment processing, there is always that question about what about security deposit? Will I be able to charge a security deposit? I think for us at this very point in time, for the release of of the payment processing as a block, that is not something that basically we build first. That's not something that we is in the now, that's really in the, in the later. That may be a very short feature if we realize we see that our assumptions are wrong. What we want is obviously ensure that you are actually completely protected. And there, I think for some properties, there is no amount that you can charge a security deposit that will definitely protect you and your property on, on the damage that that a guest could, could be able to achieve. That's why I'm basically more inclined to go into the insurance. You have a third party that is getting composited for every reservation that is going to be able to cover you in case a disaster happens. I think if you are working solely on direct bookings and relying exclusively on your security deposit, that security depositing to be huge for some properties to basically get any kind of traction. That's, that's my thing. My other points for the insurance is really that you want to get bookings and those kind of security deposits that may be very significant definitely are getting in the way of more customers, more guests that are that are traveling. And yeah, so that, those are really my kind of two considerations. Again, I think there is a difference between, you know, whether you are a premium, in which case we want to facilitate and align more the experience to what is on Airbnb with some benefits. And the, if you are going to be managing the payments yourself, then definitely we will not offer any kind of protection. So you need to be able to charge, to charge a security deposit in that regard. The, the, sorry, James, just to finish on this line, because I think it's important. But we have identified basically Super Og, they are good friends of hospitable to work with the insurance, to work with us on the insurance aspect of things. They will be able to cover 1.3 million dollars of damage to your property. And we're working with them to ensure that basically you can do a claim from your hospitable accounts and they can pay you out obviously as quickly as possible. And this will come, I think, at rather low cost for each, for each reservation. Because we're able to negotiate, you know, for 30,000 properties immediately. And the other part of it, which is really interesting is that it's not like the insurance is going to pay you first. They always going to be an attempt to to get the money directly from the guest that has caused the damage. So it means that if a guest has broken a piece of furniture, the first step is actually going to be to have a dispute resolution with them and for them to voluntarily pay to go on to repay the damages. What Super Og has shared with us is that about 30% of customers are willing to voluntarily pay upfront any kind of, any kind of damage claim that they receive. Otherwise, if they don't pay, they are basically on the blacklist of travelers and and guests. So that means 60% of the time you have the insurance that is actually kicking in. But the 30% basically are really, yeah, they're, they're probably the easier case to, to, to handle, to handle as well. So there is this kind of middle ground. It's not a security deposit still, but I find it's an interesting middle ground to test to get more people to travel direct on direct booking.
Yes, could, could we call it incidental? Because that's what I'm running to with with some places that, well, we have a hundred dollar incidental in case incidentally.
Yeah.
James, I think we've lost James to a phone call.
We may have done that. Yes, again. So James, I'm sorry, we have lost you. But you know what? You have, you have something to say. So just like everyone else, you send me, send me directly that feedback. If you, if you have something to say about insurance over to my, you can send me an email, PC@hospitable.com. Because I'm the one mapping out obviously the kind of payment processing requirements and we want to address in insurance. So obviously, I want to hear your stories and I want to hear your, your feedback about this particular item. So PC@hospitable.com.
I'll send James a message as well.
Yeah, thank you.
So we have, Emily, I think we have room for maybe one more discussion point. Would you agree?
Yes, I think.
Emily.
Oh, yes. Hi, thank you.
Thank you for patiently standing by. yours.
I am interested in what the future plans are for the design aspects of the direct booking websites. The direct booking sites are actually what recently brought me to hospitable, looking for a different solution. And I have been very pleased with the customer service I've received in the last week or two. And I'm just curious what those plans are for customizations on the design of the sites.
Thank you. That's a great question. Matthew, have you heard about the designs for direct booking websites?
What was that? Have I heard about designs for direct booking websites?
I was getting your new feed. Yes. So Emily, that is something that we're in very, very often. And I want to say clearly that this is the first templates that we've kind of been designing for. And it's just really about testing things out, receiving feedback and being able to build. So the, the thing is really, we want to to build something in public. Nothing that we do is expected to be finished. I think it's pretty clear, even five years after launch, we're still iterating on the, on the messaging automation part of it. So the thing we have always found is that it's much, it's, we build better products when it's in partnership with our customers. And especially getting, getting an understanding of they want to use our products. So that's why, you know, Sean asking about, you know, webbooks now is not actually asking about webbooks. He's really asking about the Zapier application. So that basically gives us more, more insights to do. For for direct, we're receiving a lot of feedback about design and what makes them not great. What makes them not great is, for example, that pink bar at the bottom. Absolutely. This is, this is not even something that we can. we consider to be a, to be a finished product in that regard. Um, it's basically, okay, but I I wonder, I was wondering what is this uh home section that the bottom menu is doing about? Um, because I want to have, I want to have more content. Is there something that's gonna be more pages? Oh, that's a great idea. So the next brief that we can send to designing, to the, to design agencies for designing for us, you know, more more website like that is already built on the feedback and something far more robust. And we can ask them to make five, 10 different designs uh for those kind of, for those direct booking websites. So that's something, that's the way we want to work. It's almost trapping you into giving feedback so that we can actually adjust on something that is, that is making more sense. For us, um, is that making sense?
Yes, absolutely. That's great. I have a lot of feedback I would love to share. I think the bones of it are super great. I love the minimalist look.
That's good enough.
Yes, it is. Well, it's what.
I'm not gonna be so kind. I'm not gonna be so kind.
Well, I um, I I hate the pink. I agree with you there. The pink is not my favorite. But I do love the simple look of it. One of the primary issues I'm having at this time, because I do understand that you're adding more to it, but an immediate issue I'm running into is that all of our photographs of our properties are very light, very white. And the um homepage wording that you lay over the pictures is also white. And so there is just no good way to make it look like a cohesive design on top with the white text on top of our photographs. So it looks very unprofessional at this current moment, which again, I totally get that it's under development. Um, so it's not necessarily a complaint, but rather just a curiosity and where kind of like, do you have any form of timeline at this time for how soon those changes might be rolled out?
For now, we, so the the experiment about basically publishing the website was basically kind of publish the website, can we validate the DNS records? Uh, can we get something out the door and what exactly are people gonna gonna think about? So now we're basically moving on to the next phase, which is about payment processing, displaying the right amount, et cetera, to get to the first reservation on direct that is basically going full flow. After that, it becomes really easy to keep on developing the product by adding more designs, more options, more features. Because we have something that can work full flow from zero website to one website, from zero customer to one customer to one payout. Um, so for for me, I mean, I definitely do expect that I will spend uh I will spend probably the next three to six months hearing again about uh design complaints and oh, you should have done that, you should do it this way. And that's totally okay. We are gonna, it's gonna be a continuous effort. Uh, and I'm glad that basically we are, we're gonna be working with designers for for basically building um websites according to basically what you would like to have. I think there are also multiple options. Uh, I think there, uh, I think Matthew can talk a bit about that. I was expecting to too. But the masterclass that we're gonna, that we're gonna have uh with Mark Simpson from Boostly, whose job is literally to be designing. And I think we want to facilitate to have his providers that have built an experience to basically allow them to design the templates that works for you. Um, so that's something that already we know is something that's that's kind of feasible. Um, I think there is an option for us to uh get you to build the the design templates that you that you would like um yourself, uh so not necessarily really using the template as starting point that you can then adjust uh either yourself or with professional help. Then I would definitely do see that we need to develop more templates of our own that are already satisfactory. Uh, I think we, I definitely do expect to to burn between five and $10,000 per month uh for the next year or so on building those design templates. Uh, so that we have a good enough library for multiple design scenario. Uh, which is first, uh, you know, the four, three to seven properties. Uh, then adjusting for the single property websites. Uh, we realized there were a lot of those. And I think we we don't have a good enough solution. And I think the the most, um, the the one that is the most difficult for us to solve because it requires, it could require a lot of engineering capacity is gonna be the multiple property website. So let's say you have 50 properties in two different cities because you are probably a large, larger property management company. You're gonna need to have search. Um, and I think that was a question uh that was that was asked also also on Slido. Uh, can you look at adding a calendar search option on the main page? The guest can search all our properties quickly. That is not a template question. This is far greater uh than that. And we want definitely to offer a solution for customers that would be in that in that situation. There's a lot of work for us.
It's really cool to hear all of the inner workings of what your plans are. If in the near future, just one other color option could be added for that text that overlays the picture, I would feel that the site is ready to be rolled out to my guests. At this time, it just doesn't look smooth enough or coherent enough to share um because of the lightness of our photographs. So if that was like a a soon type thing, that would be fantastic. And I have a feeling a lot of other hosts run into the same issue.
I think Ben and Toby uh have been working on that in the in the past. And I think they can definitely hear hear that kind of, the kind of feedback. So yeah, definitely the pink that will change uh the the other elements on the website. That's the third.
Thank you so much. And thank you for giving me the opportunity to um to discuss that. Thank you.
You are very welcome. Matthew, what about you share with us more information about that masterclass that I'm sure Emily would love to follow us just getting started on direct booking websites?
Yeah, I was trying to find the details here. You're right. I completely forgot to to mention that there. Um, I I don't know. Angela, do you have the anything?
Shortly, but just to to remind everyone, so Hospitable's first masterclass with Mark Simpson of Boostly is happening on next week. Thursday, 17th of February at 12:00 PM Pacific time. He'll be sharing loads of tips specifically on how to boost your direct bookings. If you haven't received the invitation yet, feel free to drop me an uh an email at angela@hospitable.com or you can find the registration link on our hospitable social media channels. And the team have circulated it just a few minutes ago, so it should be there and I will try and get here. Um, don't wait too long to register. Spots are limited. We're currently over 300 registrations, so.
Woo-hoo, that's amazing. That's our first.
Yeah, so be there, be square.
We were definitely not expecting something. That's great.
Yeah, there will be, um, you know, so Mark's gonna present to us, there will be a brief Q and A, I believe, there as well. So there'll be an opportunity to answer your questions. Um, and you know, we'll, we'll definitely be sure to share some, share some of his fantastic tips with the rest of our audience afterwards. So thanks so much for sharing that, Angela, and bailing me out here. I appreciate that.
I had it in my notes as well to talk about, but um just to 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 touch base on the Q and A part, Mark is really looking forward to your questions. So come with lots of questions. It is, it's his favorite part of doing masterclasses. So really don't hold back any questions you might have on direct bookings. He is waiting to hear from you. So that's that. Um, I think we're ready to close off and just within the time. So just a reminder that the next town hall is scheduled for two weeks from now, so Wednesday, the 23rd of February. If you didn't get a chance to um, you know, uh, share today and have constructive feedback that you want to share with us, please do so via the link I think I've pinned above, feedback.hospitable.com forward slash boards. Um, or you can submit, go ahead and leave your questions in Slido and we'll be sure to touch on them like Pierre did for the questions from January session. Um, until now, unless Pierre and Matthew have any finishing words, I'd like to say thank you and goodbye.
And see you in two weeks on March 20, on February 23rd with more updates. Hopefully you will, on February 23rd, you will be able to see your prices on your websites, on your widgets. So that is gonna be another conversation and I'm sure there will be plenty of feature requests again. Thank you very much for people that were on stage. Uh, your feedback has been heard and we definitely are looking forward to solving those problems that you escalated. Thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone. Have a good evening or good day or good morning.
Good morning.
Wherever you are. I'm gonna eat some supper. Ciao, ciao.
Yeah, same. Thank you very much. Bye-bye and good luck.